I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will you please rise and we'll say the pledge together?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order and if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rabola-Dai?
Yes.
Gethman, yes, and Dr. Bennett.
Yes, and I guess we need to appoint you officially as our treasurer. Is that, do we need a motion? Okay, I would entertain a motion to appoint Mrs. Gethman as our temporary pro temp treasurer in light of our treasurer not being here. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Okay, and if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rabola-Dai?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
And I will just say, thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you for filling in for us. We appreciate it. And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our November 16th meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Rabola-Dai. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Workman. And were there any corrections? Okay, thank you. You'll call the roll, please.
Mrs. Rabola-Dai?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Gethman, yes, and Dr. Bennett.
Yes, thank you. Motion carried. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening and thank you for coming. And I would especially like to thank all of our staff and our teachers and our bus drivers and everyone that's meeting all the needs of our students and doing such a great job in spite of all the challenges that we're facing. And I'd also like to wish everyone a very wonderful, safe and healthy and joyful Christmas, winter break, and happy holidays and happy Hanukkah, all of that. So again, thank you for coming this evening and we'll look forward to a good meeting. And Mr. Workman, would you like to add any comments?
Yes, thank you. I would also like to welcome everyone for attending or listening in. We certainly continue to have challenges and I appreciate everybody's attendance and flexibility throughout this time. This is, this time of year, we certainly have much to be thankful for. And even though it may be a little bit different this holiday season, we should still, you know, be thankful for those things. One of the things that I thought was neat when I was coming in tonight, well, one, the Mount Vernon Avenue Bridge was open, so that was exciting. But secondly, driving by the Energy Field House and seeing a lot of activity and cars and people in there, that was really neat to see that. So what a beautiful facility we have there and so glad that that's being utilized. But again, thank you all for attending and happy holidays.
2020 is about over. Yahoo. No one really wants to wish their life away, but we sure would look forward to a new year with some new things to be optimistic about. But hey, we're turning the corner. Vaccinations are out. We hope and pray that that makes a big difference. But you can only control that for what you can control and as best we can within our school district. I just applaud everyone for doing all they can. And we continue to hear concerns from the public and from within our own teachers and students and so forth. But in every situation, they understand we're all in this together and they understand there's no, there's no easy answer to any of this. So I'm really grateful to everyone for all the effort they put into this.
Thank you, Mr. Rabola-Dai.
Thank you. Thank you to those at home and thank you for those that are here this evening, most especially our upcoming retiree, Terry Strebe. As we face the new year coming, let's be grateful, as we've said, and thankful. And especially to our healthcare workers, first line workers, our teachers and the rest of our staff who've maintained education throughout this crisis. And I wish that everyone would keep three things in mind, if you will, to do whatever you can for whomever you can, whenever you can. So happy holidays, everyone, and stay safe and stay well.
Thank you. And Mrs. Gethman?
I'm not sure what's left to say. But Merry Christmas to everyone. And I want to applaud our administrators and Mr. Cedar for all the hard work they've done to keep us in session. I know it's been very tough on a lot of people and I appreciate the extra time and effort that our staff has put in, not only our teachers, but our custodial staff, our bus drivers, just making sure that everything is clean, sanitized, and ready to go. So thank you to Mrs. Nesbit and your group, and Mike, to your group as well. So thank you to all of them. And also to Knox Public Health, just a little shout out to them for working so diligently with our local administration, not only here in Mount Vernon, but in the county, keeping everybody abreast of what's going on in the county. So thank you to them as well.
Thank you. Mr. Cedar?
Well, I too would like to welcome everybody, both here and online. It is a, it's a wonderful time of the year and we have to look at it that way and make the best of a challenging situation and hopefully we'll enjoy our time together tonight. As you look on our board agenda here, we just finished with comments of board members. We do have a commendation here tonight. I'm gonna maybe move this back just a teeny bit on the agenda. I am waiting for someone to join us from the Ohio School Boards Association. We're here really to honor an exemplary school employee. And I know this particular OSBA member is, really wants to join us. A lot of board meetings happen at 6 o'clock and so she is currently, I think, at another board meeting, wants to jump over to us. So I'm gonna just move down the agenda and hopefully come back. But if it takes too long, we can jump in and do it ourselves, if that's okay. If we have any student government folks here? Yes, Jordan, there she is. Oh, you can come on up here. We want to get you on camera here, so why don't you stand at the podium? And Mr. Mike will turn it over to you. And you know what? I'm gonna focus in on you a little bit here. Oh, look at that.
All right. I hope you all are doing well, all of you up here. I'm Jordan Schisler. I'm the president of the senior class. And I'm just here to tell you about some of the stuff that's been going on at the school. So just first off, student government, recently we haven't really had many meetings because there hasn't been a lot of things that are possible because of the pandemic. But we are hoping to have more after Christmas break because that's when our homecoming is planned. And even if we can't have a dance, we're looking to have a court and some sort of Spirit Week festivities just to keep the spirit up for the students. We are actually having a holiday Spirit Week this week. So today was Merry Monday and students were supposed to wear red and green. Tomorrow is Tinsel Tuesday. Wednesday is Winter Wonderland Wednesday. And that is, you're supposed to wear blue and white for those who celebrate Hanukkah. So I thought that was interesting. Twinkle Toast Thursday for your most outrageous holiday stockings. And then Festive Friday, which is like ugly Christmas sweaters, stuff like that, which I was gonna bring my ugly Christmas sweater to show you all, but forgot it. Onto the next thing, clubs. We do have clubs meeting. First off, National Honor Society. Around a month ago, we had our induction and we were able to have an in-person induction for 32 new members. So that was really special. It was great to have some sort of normalcy within that club during this year. We are still having service opportunities. We have a blood drive in January and then in January, we're also looking to start peer tutoring, which I'm really excited for. It's just, we're gonna have NHS members tutor kids who need extra help in the library during our homeroom periods. So I'm really excited to getting that started up. I've been working with Mr. Kors librarian and our administration, so I hope that works out. Key Club is continuing to meet. They've had some really great service opportunities recently. They've rang bells for the Salvation Army, made Play-Doh for, I think also the Salvation Army, just as Christmas gifts for underprivileged children, stuff like that. MBTV, they released another episode today. They're pretty consistent, every Monday. Today talked about, they interviewed students and their different holiday traditions, healthy holiday baking. If you guys want to check that out. Everyone gained some weight during this season, students and staff of the month. And then they're also releasing a holiday edition. If you guys want to check that out. They work really hard. I think they do a great job. And then there's an orchestra concert tomorrow, their Christmas orchestra concert. I don't know exactly how attendance is at this, but I'm sure it will be livestreamed on the Mount Vernon City Schools Facebook. Want to watch? And then Wednesday is the band concert. And so normally they have concerts and symphonic bands split up and they'll play separate pieces. But this year, just due to COVID and all that, they have concerts in symphonic together. So it's kind of like marching band, but in a concert. So it's really cool. That will also be livestreamed, if you guys want to watch that as well. And then we have some sports here. Swim team, I'm on the swim team, so this was a special place in my heart. But last Wednesday, we had a meet and the girls varsity and the girls JV both got first out of four teams. Boys varsity got third out of fourth and boys JV got second out of fourth, which is actually kind of amazing because we only had one boy swim one JV event. So I don't know how that math worked out, but. And we have a try meet this Friday, a try valley at 6:30 PM. And that will be livestreamed, hopefully. Basketball, the girls and boys basketball team, they've had a good start, wins and losses for both of them. But this week, the boys are at Worcester this Friday and the girls are at Olentangie Berlin this Tuesday and they're home versus Worcester this Thursday. And then finally, wrestling. Last week, they had a tough loss to Galleon, but it was a really cool meet because it was their first meet at the Field House, which was really awesome. It was a delight in the track area. It was livestreamed, it was pretty cool. They have a duel at Pickering Central this Thursday and they also are wrestling at River Valley this Saturday. And then finally, bowling. They have a match versus Big Walnut this Friday. That's all I have. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to mention that, and maybe you've seen it, but there was a statistics teacher who was honored by his class and it's kind of gone viral. I guess it was on Instagram. And he was totally surprised because when, it's been a remote class, when he turned on his screen, none of the students had their cameras on. And then all of a sudden, their cameras went on and they had "thank you" and they had little notes telling the teacher. So I just thought, you know, you might encourage the kids to thank their teachers because they have really gone above and beyond and let them know in some way. And thanks for coming this evening and for your good report and all the good sports events. That's great.
Thank you, Jordan. Well, I told you we were gonna shift gears here a little bit. And hi, Kim. How are you? Good to see you. Kim has joined us. And so we're gonna just go backwards a little bit in our agenda to the commendation section. And so without further ado, Kim, I'm gonna turn it over to you. You can turn it back over to me and we'll just play tag.
Okay, it sounds great. Well, greetings from the Ohio School Board Association and thank you for allowing me to participate, to participate this evening. It is a pleasure to be with you. As you, many of you know, the region is one of five OSBA regions and it serves 14 Ohio counties, central Ohio counties, and 103 public school districts. And in the central region, we sponsor the Fall and Spring Conference, which many of you know. We also recognize the achievements of school districts, board members, teachers, community members, and district employees. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the Ohio School Boards Association, Central Region, to recognize the service of district employee, Mrs. Terry Strebe, as an exemplary school employee. And as from working with Terry over the past six years to help your board and your leadership team get to various events for OSBA Central Region, I certainly think this was a great nomination. In nominating Terry Strebe for this award, the Mount Vernon Board of Education wrote, and Bill, you can take it.
Thank you. Come on up here, Terry, would you please?
Yes.
The other little tidbit behind Terry, and we're celebrating this at a different time. I had to try to find a way to get Terry here. Can we see you? Are you, yeah, see, there's a camera right there. I had to kind of trick her into thinking, hey, this was some sort of retirement thing. Even though we want to celebrate her retirement, she's retiring at the end of the month and we're gonna sorely miss her, but I had to trick her. And we got her here. Finally, I had to share with her. So I'm gonna read what kind of brings you here and it's just a small snippet of all that you've meant to Mount Vernon City Schools. I said, "To the OSBA, please accept this exemplary school employee letter of nomination for Ms. Terry Strebe. Ms. Strebe will be retiring in December after 27 years with the district in a variety of administrative assistant positions. Most recently, Mrs. Strebe has served as executive administrative assistant to the superintendent for the past 15 years. Mrs. Strebe is the consummate professional. Her ability to positively communicate with diverse groups of stakeholders is second to none. Mrs. Strebe warmly greets every visitor, in person or on the phone, regardless of the circumstances, with respect and compassion. Mrs. Strebe's management organizational skills are exceptional. Her understanding of board policy and the ability to work collaboratively to develop board agendas and work sessions is incredible. Perhaps one of her most admirable qualities is her ability to plan for special events. On a yearly basis, we enjoy the privilege of inviting our senior citizens to a fall and spring senior citizens luncheon. Terry Strebe's light shines brightest when these, when she masterfully organizes these events with nearly 250 senior citizens, join our students for lunch and the entertaining program. This is truly a wonderful event, of which fosters goodwill in our community and for our schools. It is without reservation or hesitation that I would recommend Mrs. Terry Strebe as a recipient of the Exemplary School Employee Award." Kim?
Terry, it is a great pleasure to present the 2020 Exemplary School Employee Award to you. We thank you for your service to public education and for your commitment to the students and the families of Mount Vernon.
Thank you, Kim.
All right.
And before I take.
So we got our masks on. We can do this. This is legal. But we so much appreciate you. You are an exemplary employee and you'd be a hard person to replace. We will have a special kind of a ceremony for Terry's retirement at a different time, but I had to get her here somehow. She almost bailed on me at the last moment and I had to kind of just say, oh, Terry, you're killing me here.
I thank all of you. I appreciate this very much. I know that a lot of times, there's letters and forms and things like that and it takes your time and effort. I so appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I do, I never like to leave a board meeting without saying that not only do we thank Terry for all of her work, board members and district leaders, we thank you for your leadership and your willingness to give to your community and to your school district. It is because of you and your efforts that we enjoy such strong schools in Ohio. So thank you all so much. It's wonderful to see you even virtually.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. And feel free, you don't have to stick around. You've got lots of things to do and we'll catch you on the flip side, okay?
Okay, great. Thanks so much, guys.
All right.
Okay, we have superintendent's report.
Okay, let's pull this up here. Maybe we ought to double check with our monthly reports here. We kind of, we had the student government. Maybe we ought to check on CD and E quick.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Nesbit? Nesbit, do you have anything you'd like to share this evening? Mr. Lang? Okay, thank you. And there wasn't any public participation anyway, so I think we're good.
All right, very good.
Thank you for keeping it that way.
Well, we bounced around a little bit there, so I wanted to get you back on track. I do have a few items for information for the board at this time. Suggested board meeting dates for 2021. Take a look at that. As of now, we're going to schedule all board meetings here at Twin Oak Elementary until such a time that we can begin to, you know, shrink some social distancing and get through this COVID period. And then we'd like to move our board meetings over to Energy Field House. But until such time, our location will be here. You'll see on the suggested board dates there that, you know, we try our best to keep to the third Monday of the month and try to keep to 6 o'clock. We won't vote on this until our January board meeting, but those are there for you to look at. Another item for information is the expiration of a term of office letter. Mr. Thompson has served this board really well on the Knox County Career Center board. His term expires and that letter is just a notification of that. We'd certainly like to see later in this agenda, we point him back to that board and the work that he's so good at there. And then the last thing I have under the superintendent's item for information is I'm calling it a parent update. I kind of wanted to get rid of the word COVID for a while and just share some information. So I'm gonna pull this up. And this went out today to our constituency. We sent it out via an email to every staff member and every parent in the district. We also put it on our website, so it is listed on the district website. And we did send out a Knox alert, just notifying people of that. So if you can see it on your screen, great. I put a link there. If you are able to look up here, fine. Again, just some brief introductions there. I want to bring yourself, I want to bring a couple things to your attention here. We have decided that we want to do a winter break, Mount Vernon City Schools Meal Program. We want to give all of our students an opportunity to receive free breakfast and lunches during the winter break. A week's worth of meals will be handed out on December 21st and on Monday, December 28th. And we're gonna do that from 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock. It'll be next to what, we're gonna, we're gonna put a bus out there in the back parking lot of the high school, kind of closest to the Knox County Schools Career Center. Just look for the bus and we'll be handing out breakfast and lunches there. All right? Now, what we are asking everybody is because we really don't know what kind of participation we'll get. We had a director's meeting this morning and we were kind of going, ah, how many do you think? We don't know. And when I sent this out at 11:45, this parent update, we have a link right here. It says, "Winter Break Meal Program in Tent Form." You click on it, it asks two very simple questions. It asks, "How many students in your household will be participating?" And you gotta pick between one and four. And if something's different, there's an other line and then what school you're coming from. We don't want any more information than that. In the first 45 minutes of posting this, this morning at 11:45, we had over 60 families who wanted to participate already that averaged to just about 140 meals. As of tonight's board meeting, we're now up over 110 families who want to participate. And I think Kathy has said 234 students receiving a week's worth of meals in the coming days. That's really important for our folks to go out and sign up on this. It gives us an idea how much we need to have prepared and ready for next Monday. We have kind of put a Thursday 12/19 as that kind of a deadline so that we can really have an idea how to best prepare for you. I mean, already we're looking at almost 250 meals. 250 students will be preparing five days' worth of meals for, and they'll come and pick those things up. So we're, we're excited to be able to give back to the community in this way. Certainly, there is support at the state and the federal level to help us support this endeavor. And we realize that there are families who are struggling. And there's no shame in that. We all go through that and we want to help support you along the way. So I wanted to make sure that I let you know of that. As I scroll down through the parent update, this morning at 11 o'clock, we updated our dashboard. As of 11 o'clock this morning, we still have six active student cases, six active staff cases, and there's the buildings for which those are currently at. This information can be found on our district website. We update it daily. I know sometimes people will take a look at this and go, wow, that seems so low. And, you know, we can only report the information that comes to us from the health department and parents who share. We feel it's very accurate and we want to continue to kind of update that for you on a regular basis. As you take a look at it, right now, we have no cases at Wigan Street, no cases at Pleasant. We have one staff member at Twin Oak. We have two staff members, or two students at the middle school, two at the high school, two staff members at East, two Student Digital Academies, two staff members at Dan Emmett and one at Columbia. And so when you think about a district of nearly 3,800 students and staff of pretty well close to almost 500 staff members, we continue to meet those challenging times. People are stepping up across the board. We, again, I shared before, we don't have quarantine numbers because they're so fluid and they change. But we've averaged somewhere in the neighborhood of anywhere from 100 to 150 students or staff in quarantine. Those are certainly numbers that we do our best to keep a hold of. So that's our current dashboard, the way we see it. Our hope and goal is that we can get ourselves to our winter break here coming up. So we would encourage folks to continue to, to look at that dashboard and read it. I do say here that we've had a number of days where we've had an all hands on deck mindset and we have principles, we have lots of folks who are going into classrooms to kind of keep classes going. And certainly that's commendable, that there's a lot of people stepping up to do a good job. While our goal will always remain in a traditional environment as best we can, we will make adjustments if we need to. And there are some reasons that we've shared before, rising Knox County alert levels, rising student and staff absences due to COVID positive cases and their quarantine. We're really using that 20% number in there that we're trying to monitor closely. Then, of course, state and local mandates due to community spread. We understand that the community spread seems really high right now and it is. You know, we also monitor very closely what's going on right here within our school setting. And those are the numbers that are reflected on that dashboard. The other thing on this parent update is we really are encouraging parents to develop a Plan B. Develop a Plan B. We have been anticipating increases of positive cases among students and staff due to recent Thanksgiving holiday. We're slowly beginning to see some of those increases move into the district. We would encourage each family to develop a Plan B in the event that we would have to pivot quickly to a remote or red learning model. And, and we understand the challenges that families have when they have to look for childcare and daycare, if we'd have to move into a remote learning environment. We understand that. We appreciate it. We're trying really hard to keep our schools open, but there may come a time where we have to be willing and ready to pivot quickly. Just would encourage all families to have that Plan B in the event that we would have to do that. Again, our goal is to get ourselves through this winter break by Friday and then we'll continue to monitor things really closely. Another thing we're doing is Chromebooks for the holidays. It sounds like we're giving them away. We're really not. But what we will be doing is we'll be sending home Chromebooks for our students in grades K through 12. Now, 6th through 12th graders have them every day and they take them back and forth. But our K-5 students, they don't take Chromebooks back and forth. But on Friday, we're going to make sure, prior to their departure, that all our K-5 students take home a Chromebook so that they can use it during the holiday break. They may be able to continue with some kinds of learning opportunities. But at the same time, we want to be proactive and be prepared for whatever may come after the winter break. You know, we hear, like you hear, that the, the winter holidays, whether it's Christmas or Hanukkah or Kwanzaa, New Year's, that's going to be one of the busiest times. or Hanukkah or Kwanzaa, New Year's, that's going to be one of the busiest times of the year, where, where families and folks get together. It also is one of those scary times, why we want to get together, the, the chance of community spread and continual spread is, is going to be even higher. So we want to be ready. So we're going to be sending home Chromebooks with all our K-5 students on Friday, and we really want to continue to inform parents to have that Plan B ready, okay? In this update is also about the Mount Vernon Digital Academy. The end of the second nine weeks is January 14th. Believe it or not, families will have an opportunity to enroll in the Mount Vernon Digital Academy at the end of the nine-week grading period. And we will provide additional information and an intent form that will come out on the 21st of December, the Monday right before break. We need to be able to plan for any transitions, and it's really, really important to us. So as we have folks who decide to shift from one to another, we need to make sure that we can staff those appropriately. So your intent forms are really going to be important to us. If you don't plan to change your current learning environment, in other words, if you're coming five days a week now and you don't have any intentions of going to the Digital Academy, you do nothing. If you're currently in the Digital Academy and you want to stay in the Digital Academy, you do nothing. It's only the students who said, you know what, I'm, I'm, for one reason or another, I need to switch. That's who the intent form will be for, okay? There are some new CDC guidelines I've shared here. I won't go into that. It's some quarantine guidelines. We've met with Knox County health officials, and while they'll always maintain that the, the traditional 14 days of quarantine is best, due to circumstances, the 10-day quarantine and the seven-day quarantine is something we'll be recognizing here in Knox County and quite frankly, across the nation. So we want to make sure that people understand what that looks like. Governor DeWine's Stay Safe Ohio Protocols continues to really stress the importance of masking, distance, all of these things, washing hands, things that, quite frankly, we're doing every day here. And then finally, may the holiday season fill your home with joy, your heart with love, and your life with laughter. Wishing you and your family a wonderful holiday season with the promise of a bright new year. So that's kind of my update, not completely COVID-related, but it's a parent update that just went out. We thought we would share that with you this evening. Okay?
Before we go on, I'd like Mrs. Strube to know you're welcome to leave. You don't have to stay for a whole board meeting unless you want to. And thank you so much for coming.
Hey, see you, Terry. Bye. We have a number of items recommended for board approval in the superintendent's section tonight. We would like to set our organizational regular meeting date for January of 2021. As you know, we have to set this date before January 15th. It's a high revised code requirement. We would like you to consider January 11th. It's a Monday at 6:00 with an inclement weather makeup day for Tuesday, January 12th. And then the second part is a board policy we reviewed last month. Their cost principles and procurement, so those two items for your consideration.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve those two items, Ezra. Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Were there any questions? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried.
One of the other things with an organizational meeting is we need to appoint a president pro tem for that meeting. We do need someone to make an appointment or nomination there. We've got this up as a separate motion here for your review.
Dr. Bennett?
Okay, any other nominations? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Getzmann?
Yep.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
And Dr. Bennett?
I'll abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bennett, for being president pro tem for our January meeting. And then to finish out this portion of the agenda, we needed a motion to appoint the Knox County Career Center Board of Education, a motion to appoint Mr. Thompson to the Career Center Board.
I would entertain a motion then to that. Thank you, Mr. Workman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. And if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Stain?
Getzmann, yes, and Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried. Congratulations.
Yep. Thank you for your work. We have three board members that serve on the Career Center Board, and it's invaluable, so thank all of you.
For to curriculum, and I guess I'll go ahead and talk about the student liaison report. The first article, I'm going to skip the first couple, and the one that talks about ADHD, which is Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder. The research is questioning whether or not students outgrow this. And the research study was published in the Journal of the Developmental and Behavioral Pediatrics. Thirty to 60% were diagnosed when they were children, and, excuse me, 30 to 60% diagnosed no longer meet that diagnostic, diagnostic criteria by late adolescence. So that's pretty significant. And the, the several articles that they also cited said they weren't sure whether students are outgrowing it, or whether it's because, once they become adolescents, they do their own reporting, and they may not be reporting as, than the same way that their parents and teachers would. They do believe, though, that certain coping skills and job choices play a prominent role in lessening the symptoms. And the most important finding is that when parents get information about ADHD and how to work with their child when they're younger, then those children tend to have the best outcome. And that's according to Dr. Damon Corb, who's the developmental behavioral pediatrician in Los Gatos, California, and he's the author of Raising an Organized Child. The next article that I'd like to highlight is regarding the Teachers Build Life Size Candy Land game in the classroom. That was pretty interesting. And a fourth-grade teacher discovered that Candy Land was actually created in the 1940s by a teacher who was trying to entertain quarantined children during the polio epidemic. So Mrs. Dietrichs and another teacher created a life-size version in the classroom, and the students would move across the room-sized board as they do interactive lessons. And it took these two teachers eight hours to set up the classroom over the weekend, and this was a total surprise to students when they came in on Monday morning. And parents commented to the teacher that they, they, the students were just blown away by this and could talk about nothing else for weeks afterward. So it was a total success. And I don't know if you can see the pictures. Were you able to pull it up?
Yeah, if you'd like me to.
Just, I thought you'd get a kick out of seeing the classroom. There's also a video that you can click on. They had candy hanging from the ceilings and all kinds of.
What was that again? This one? Let's take a look here.
You don't need to click on, if you keep scrolling down, there's another picture of the classroom or two. That's what it looks like. And when the students came in, think of their surprise when they had no idea this was coming. So, and they made, the teachers made the comment that the students needed something to just draw them together and give them something, something to be excited about with all the pandemic and not being able to do so many things, so. You don't need to go on the video, I don't think, but. And then the last thing is the research article, and it's what the research says about the academic power of friendship. And I thought this was pretty interesting. Friends can make mundane tasks more fun. And Lydia Denworth has written a book in 2020. It's entitled Friendship: The Evolution, Biology, and Extraordinary Power of Life's Fundamental Bond. And she talks about the bond and friendship and the impact that it has in the classroom. And she starts out by giving an example in biology. When zebra fish smell familiar fish, they show reduced, reduced levels of fear, which is a fact that seems really cool but kind of irrelevant, until you learn that a 2011 study of humans showed that having a best friend present during an experience significantly buffered any negative feelings, lowering their cortisol and boosting a level of sense of self-worth. Another study found that talking to supportive friends after a stressful incident increases the speed with which the cortisol levels revert to normal. And in one study, adolescents working together took part in more exploratory behavior. They learned faster and they completed tasks better than they did working alone. There was an example and by Dr. Brett Larson and his colleagues arranged for pairs of students to be taught a new programming language. And throughout this teaching experience, children were asked how they felt about their partner multiple times. And the response to the question of how much the student thought that the other was his or her friend predicted how much the student learned in that situation. So that was kind of interesting. The evidence suggests that with a friend on hand, a child's tolerance for novelty and intellectual stretching tends to increase, while without, without one, engagement tends to decrease. So the question they leave us with is how can educators both promote this type of bond and exploit its academic power? So I thought that was interesting. And I know that's probably true. If you have a friend, it makes it a lot easier, so.
Kind of trying to wonder if I'm in that 40% who still has ADHD since I was a kid because I can't stop moving.
Well, you've learned to cope, though.
There we go, yeah.
There we go.
Under this section, I have no items for approval at this time, and that will move us on to fiscal services. I'm going to go ahead and, and jump in on this section. No items for information at this time. We have a number of items for board approval. One is the financial report, and the other is donations. If you take a quick look at the financial report, not a lot to report here as we're kind of in the December months, but I think if you go to this page, our, our traditional page here, what you're noticing is we're just getting close to the halfway mark of the year, just short. If you look over in the far right-hand column, you'll see that we're kind of right there at that 40 to 45% of expenditures and revenues. So we're, we're kind of on track with estimates as we moved in to this school year. And so I know Gary does an amazing job of keeping us up to date and on track with that. And again, our earnings relative to investment reports, again, we're bringing in a little bit of money better than some years, several years ago, but we continue to do our best to invest those things. So that information for you. And then, secondly, there are donations. Staples has become a real valued partner within the school setting, donating supplies to Dan Emmett Elementary. J.J. Electric, a 55-inch smart TV to Dan Emmett, Mrs. Sweeney's room. And this is a tremendous, a wonderful gift, was from Brown Township here in Mount Vernon. Brown Township got some coronavirus relief funds, and they thought of the schools. And I, I can't say enough, thank you to Brown Township for that wonderful donation. We're looking for ways that we can utilize it to assist some of our families and students who, who quite frankly, live in Brown Township, and how can we can do that? So thank you to Brown Township. Mount Vernon First Church has Nazarene water bottles at Pleasant Street. And a really interesting one here, the Cozy Valley Community Tennis Association, they got a $5,000 grant. Steve Tier, our tennis coach, is a big part of this organization, he's not the president. They took that $5,000 and they put them into tennis rackets for kindergarten and first graders to use in PE class. So not only are they going to use it in PE class, but when the class is over, they're going to allow those rackets to go home with those kindergarten and first graders. So a wonderful little program to kind of emphasize a lifelong sport, to get kindergarten and first-grade students involved, and tennis is a wonderful activity. And so those donations for your approval.
I would entertain a motion then to approve the financial report and the donations, Ezra. Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Were there any questions?
No, just, again, an acknowledgement to Mr. Tier for using those funds in our school system, so thank you to him.
You'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, our legislative liaison report.
Thank you. There's two links there, but I'm going to go with the one from November. And there's so much in each of these reports, I'm just going to highlight a few. HB 305 passed the House, and this bill creates a new school funding formula. And the two changes that were included regard transportation modifications and the School Funding Oversight Commission, which they now will have three school board members on that commission. And now it will go to the Senate. HB 220 permits school districts to use the blockchain technology. SB 1 is in a conference committee and would reduce regulatory restrictions, including for schools, by 30% by the year 2024. SB 89 was signed into law by Governor DeWine, and that's regarding that voucher program. HB 404 was also signed into law by Governor DeWine. It permits members of a public body to hold meetings via electronics. It extends the summer school, summer, summer school service program regulations. It extends license deadlines, including for teachers and principals and counselors through 21, 22. And schools cannot be penalized for failing to administer diagnostics and health screenings. And this is all due to the pandemic. The governor vetoed SB 311, which would have prohibited the Department of Health from issuing mandatory statewide or regional quarantines. And there's so much information on both of these that if you want to peruse those at your leisure, you're more than welcome, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot more by January 1st. So if you have any questions or comments, please let me know. Thank you.
There's, if I could, there's one on the December 7th one that caught my attention on changing requirements for substitute teachers. Don't know how you feel about that bill as it compares to our current requirements, but it's allowing, if I did it right, it's opening it up for districts to set their own, so, yeah.
I found it alarming on that report, Steve, that was either Indiana or Illinois, and I apologize for not memorizing which of the two states it was. But their requirement, which I found alarming, was a high school diploma and the age of 18.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah. Those are not good ideas at all.
You know, to answer your question there, Steve, I mean, I, I think, I understand why they put it up. Subs are so incredibly hard to find. Right now, you have to have a bachelor's degree in order to get a substitute license or certificate. I still think there's some real value and importance to that, and quite frankly, we really try hard to get those who not only have a bachelor's degree, but something in, in the education field. So even if that would pass and would provide a bit more flexibility, I think we would probably still really strive to kind of stay in that lane where they have some secondary education that they can bring to our students. Yeah.
Well, I just found it interesting and note that from time to time, we struggle as well, so we're not endorsing this. But I did find it interesting as they were talking about obsolete teachers teaching remotely. obsolete teachers teaching remotely into the school where there's a classroom of students. And they, so they had that scenario. So to be able to put somebody to at least be there to monitor the classroom while the teacher is still at home teaching remotely. So they had the reverse there too. So.
Interesting.
So, okay. Thank you.
These are different times, aren't they? Very unusual.
We have two items for board approval tonight in this section. Our December 2021 membership dues. We've been longstanding members of the Ohio School Board Association and have that recommendation to continue that relationship. And then item number two is also something we've been doing for some time. And we've taken advantage a little bit of, of the legal assistance that comes from OSBA. And so the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund, those two items for your consideration.
I would entertain a motion to approve those two items.
I'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any questions? If you'll call the roll, please.
Mrs. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Getzmann, yes, and Dr. Bennett?
I need to abstain.
We have another item in this section. It's been separated out and it's the Knox Educational Service Center and Governing Board Service Agreement for 2021. You know, we realized over some period of time, we didn't have the technical specifications of that contracted agreement. And we just wanted to kind of more formalize that and have a copy for us as we move forward. And we separated it out because we knew that Dr. Bennett wanted to vote on this one as well. It's important knowing she'd have to abstain from the OSBA stuff. So we pulled it out for that reason. And both Gary and I feel good about that service agreement and what it really looks like from a contractual standpoint.
Thank you for that explanation. I would entertain a motion to approve that service agreement.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. I think he gave me a nod. Hey, if you'll call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Getzmann, yes, and Dr. Bennett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. And student services, there are no items. Okay, we're on to personnel then.
Okay, moving on to personnel and certificated licensed staff, no items for information at this time. We do have the employment of some of the folks we were just talking about, substitute teacher, home instructor, really just those two items for your approval tonight.
I would entertain a motion to approve those items.
I'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mrs. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Getzmann, yes, and Dr. Bennett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. And classified staff?
Under classified staff, we have no items for information. A couple of items for board approval. We do have a retirement to announce. Lori Ramsey, who's part of our central office, she's the administrative assistant to curriculum and certificated personnel, will be retiring at the end of January. So she's going to kind of pull out through January with us. And I know we'll be looking for the, her replacement. And then items number two is the employment of secretary and a library aide, both on one-year contracts. And then item three is the approval of substitutes in various parts within the organization. Those three items for your approval.
Hey, thank you. I would entertain a motion for those three items.
I'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Getzmann, yes, and Dr. Bennett?
Yes. Motion carried. And you do not need executive session? So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Let me think about this.
Call the roll, please.
Yes, Mrs. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson?
Oh, sorry. Safe to go.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann, yes, and Dr. Bennett?
Yes. Motion carried. And thank you again for serving as our treasurer pro tem. And thank you all again for coming.
Stay well, stay safe.
Yes, stay safe, stay healthy and.